Let the record reflect, we've reconvened with all members present. Councilman Bob Landergan is absent, excused. For those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just.
And please remain standing as we remember two longtime Madison residents that we lost over the past few weeks. Rosemarie Sedano passed away on June 2nd. She was eighty-seven, survived by her daughter Marie and son Mark, two stepsons Joseph and William, stepdaughter Vivian, three grandchildren, and was preceded by her husband Viviano in nineteen eighty-eight. She was born in South Philadelphia in thirty-seven, and she and her husband settled in Madison after their wedding, where they raised their family, lived here for the last fifty-two years. She was active parishioner at St. Vincent Martyr and taught CCD for many years. She lived a life of service, especially to children. She served as librarian at Torrey J. for several years before becoming a teacher's assistant at ECLC. And also remember Ricardo Basialo Enrique Zinetz, longtime resident Madison, died on the twenty-seventh of May, eighty-four years old, survived by his wife Myrtle, one son Ricardo, daughter Gina, two grandsons, three brothers and a sister. He was born in nineteen forty in Panama City, in Panama. Spent his early years there before immigrating to the United States in the nineteen-sixties, proudly served our country in the U.S. Army, and was Army discharged. Ricardo met the love of his life, Myrtle, while working together in New York, and they began their married life together in Brooklyn before selling in Madison. Known for his curious mind and love of learning, Ricardo had an knack for taking things apart, especially electronic, just to see how they worked. It didn't say whether he put them back together again. Homebody by nature, he found joy in simple pleasures, watching TV and comedies and taking long walks or bike rides around Madison. He also pursued his passion for photography through classes and club participation. So let us take a moment to remember Rosemarie Sedano and Ricardo Enrique Zinetz, and let us pass our thoughts on to family and friends they leave behind. All right, there are no minutes for approval. So welcome all. I apologize for our little bit late start. We did go a little bit over in our executive meeting, but we are now here. And to start off with our greetings, I want to wish a very happy birthday to Councilwoman Melissa Honahan.
Aww.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Melissa.
And I'm sure she said earlier today she couldn't think of a better way to spend her birthday than with her closest friend, so thank you for giving us your time today. And also, welcome to another rainy June day. And a few updates on our upcoming meeting schedule. Our next meeting will be moved from Monday, July twenty-third to Wednesday, July twenty-fifth to accommodate the process of approving our affordable housing plan, and this process must be coordinated with the planning boards, which is why we are pushing back two days. Also, we are canceling our July fourteenth meeting, as we typically drop one of the June or July meetings during the lighter summer agenda season. And I want to recognize our employee of the month is Recreation Director Zach Ellis. Zach coordinated the platypus lacrosse tournament a few weeks ago at the MRC. There were fifty-two teams in the tournament with more than a thousand participants and spectators, and this year was especially challenging because of the rainy weather and the loss of parking in the MRC parking lot, which is under construction. Zach's extra efforts and advanced preparation resulted in a safe and successful event, and it certainly was not easy, a lot of moving parts. Speaking of moving parts, I'm going to move myself down below for some proclamations. And I'd like to invite up to accept this proclamation Dr. Vishwa Adhurli and Joakim Keitner, please come on up here. And this is very special that they're accepting this proclamation as I performed my three-hundredth wedding ceremony a few months ago, and here is the couple. And it won't be counted in my ceremonies for Madison, but this fall I will be performing the ceremony for my son Jack, who will be marrying Ricky. And, you know, it was not too long ago, should have been much longer ago, where that could have never been possible. And it's a reminder with what we see what's going on right now, that this proclamation is more important than ever. We cannot afford to take step backward for people who are so much a part of our life and are often not treated the way they should be. So this proclamation covers some of the history and the reason we do this, to reinforce what I just said. But whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, and some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from various civil rights moments that have brought together one group after another, from the margins to the mainstream of American society. Whereas June twenty-twenty-five is the fifty-sixth anniversary of Stonewall uprising in New York City, which is recognized as a catalyst for the modern LGBTQ civil rights movement, and to be noted there, the fact that the history behind Stonewall is they're attempting to scrub it away from our history, which is unbelievably sad. Whereas LGBTQ individuals and their allies have had immeasurable impact to the cultural and civic economic success of our country, and whereas the borough of Madison is committed to supporting the visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community, and whereas every human being has a right to love freely and live their lives openly as who they are, and whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge the need for education and awareness remains vital. And whereas celebrating Pride Month offers the opportunity to reflect on the progress made, acknowledge the challenges that remain, and commit to the fostering of an environment that is inclusive, safe, and supportive for all members of the LGBTQ community, excuse me. Now therefore I, Robert H. Connolly, Mayor Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim the month of June twenty-twenty-five as Pride Month in the borough of Madison in support of the LGBTQ community, and recognize all LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make Madison a vibrant community to which to live, work, and visit.
Would you like to say a few words?
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, officers of this town. It's with great honor and pride that I accept this proclamation. When I was a kid, it never occurred to me that I would be so warmly welcomed and my lifestyle celebrated. It is only possible here in America, here in New Jersey, Madison, which we've called our home for nearly thirty years before getting married. There is a lot of good and bad things in our history, but going forward, I hope we all celebrate who we are, remember the freedoms and the love we have for each other, and be with each other into the future. God bless us all. Thank you.
We have representatives from the Historic Preservation Commission. And I'd like to call up Patrick Sullivan, his wife Michelle, and the children, come on up. And I appreciate the feedback that your children have been given so far today. Yep. We do need a future mayor, so you'll be ready. All right, this is an annual event that we recognize those that really make a difference in our community. We just heard about how welcoming Madison is, and we have a great heritage for the history of our buildings, and so we're going to recognize that. I'm going to read this first, whereas only once, and I won't repeat in the second one, but whereas the Madison Historic Preservation Commission was established in nineteen ninety-three to encourage preservation of sites of historic, archaeological, cultural, scenic, and archaeological significance, you said that wrong, and to provide advice and recommendations on plans submitted in renovations of facades and properties, not only historic district, but throughout Madison. I share this for anyone that's getting ready to renovate, please reach out and get the guidelines. Whereas Seven Waverly Place, formerly the Old Methodist Church, is a vernacular commercial building constructed in eighteen forty-four with subsequent alterations in the eighteen-seventies, again in the nineteen-thirties, when the shop fronts were added, and the building's distinctive curved Dutch pediment is a notable character element in Madison downtown civic and commercial historic district. Whereas Madison resident Patrick Sullivan, with his support with his wife Michelle and the whole family, and parents, I lost my spot, was able to create a historic feel to his new business. The Baker has a European café cultural feel that is consistent within historic Madison and showcases the period details with warm and inviting interior and exterior. Whereas unparalleled attention to authenticity and craftsmanship in the interior decoration consists of onsite hand fabricated expansive bar comprised of oak panels, period dated undercounted corbels, honed marble countertops consistent with the late nineteenth and early twentieth centuries. An oval framed nineteenth-century oil painting of Louis XV was imported from Paris and is the centerpiece on a hand fabricated oak wall paneling and adorned with period polluted? Polluted, thank you. I'm new at this job, so... And large crown moldings. Other artwork includes the late nineteenth-century oil painting from Paris of Marie Antoinette, who is rumored to have included the, introduced the croissant to France, very appropriate, the best croissants in town by far. Portraits from the nineteenth century and early nineteen hundreds France silk parade flag, period dated cushions and sconces, oak cabinets, and refinished original pine flooring add to the historic appeal. And whereas the Madison Historic Preservation Commission congratulates and commends Patrick Sullivan, the baker of Madison, for his thoughtful renovation with period appropriate details, which creates a storefront that takes you back in time of the building's construction. Now therefore I, Robert H. Connolly, the Mayor Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby recognize Patrick and Michelle Sullivan for their vision, which contributes to the character of Borough as a place of beauty and architectural value. Tyler, anything to add?
Congratulations.
Would you like to say a few words?
I don't have anything to say. Thank you very much. And it was a blast designing the space, but really I give credit to my wife and my father-in-law. I think he said enough for me today.
All right, as I'm kind of losing my voice here, I think I might tag team on this next one and recruit Tyler to give the background on this next presentation, and I'll take over for the last paragraph. But let me have the Kyle family up here, Ryan and Katie Kyle and family, for the renovations to their home at forty-five Prospect Street. And they were very well aware, but I grew up at eighty-two Prospect Streets, so I'm very proud of the work they have done.
Whereas the house at forty-five Prospect Street is a historic center hall colonial dating back to circa eighteen thirty, said to have been originally constructed by Henry Keep as a wedding gift for his daughter and son-in-law. And whereas the house features a distinctive architectural design with double-facing front gables, a columned wraparound porch, multiple fireplaces, high ceilings, and many original details from the eighteen hundreds. Additionally, it retains the original two-story barn and hayloft. And whereas the Kyles have lived at forty-five Prospect Street for over ten years and were originally attracted to its historic charm and proximity to Madison's vibrant downtown. With the help of the Madison Historical Society, Ryan and Katie researched the property and uncovered fascinating history of their home. And whereas, after recognizing the need for restoration in certain areas of the house and the necessity for additional living space to accommodate their family's needs, the Kyles spent two years collaborating with Dan Enson of Mendham Designs on the architectural design. The house is currently undergoing a year-long construction project with Mark Oaks from Oaks Homes. And whereas the Madison Historical Preservation Commission congratulates and commends Ryan and Katie Kyle for the thoughtful renovation of their home at forty-five Prospect Street. They are preserving the historic character of the home and carefully replicating many of its original lines and details, and preserving the original two-story barn that sits on the property.
Now therefore I, Robert H. Connolly, the Mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby recognize Ryan and Katie Kyle and their children for the meticulous renovation and preservation of their home at forty-five Prospect Street, which contributes to the character of the Borough of Madison. Congratulations, and thank you for your dedication.
We would just like to thank the Madison Historic Preservation Commission. We also like to thank, you know, the council members here, Mayor Connolly. It's been a very long project, you know, with the previous family up here, probably not as stressful as their lives right now. But, yeah, we look forward to getting back in the house and welcoming anyone who would like a tour of it, so, thank you.
And if I can get Mayor Mariana Holden, Pastor Howard, and Jim's going to stay back and take pictures, all right. And that tag team presentation worked so well, we'll do it again. I'm going to blame it on being jet lagged from coming in from Portland, Oregon yesterday.
Whereas the Madison Historic Preservation Commission was established in nineteen ninety-three by Ordinance Number Thirty-One to encourage preservation of sites of historic, archaeological, and cultural, scenic, and architectural significance, and to provide architectural advice and recommendations on plans submitted for renovations to the facades of properties, not only in the historic district, but also throughout the Borough of Madison. And whereas the Presbyterian Church of Madison is the oldest congregation in Madison, New Jersey. It was established as a simple wooden meeting house in seventeen forty-seven, unadorned by steeple or bell on a hillside on Main Street in Madison, which is now Hillside Cemetery. And whereas in eighteen twenty-five, the Presbyterian congregation built a new brick building in the federal style along the turnpike and overlooking the old cemetery, an original church site, this building is now the Heller Center next to the Madison Junior School. It was added to the National Register of Historic Places in two thousand eight for its significance in architecture. And whereas in eighteen eighty-eight, Webb Memorial Chapel was constructed at the church's current location at nineteen Green Avenue, a gift of the Presbyterian Church of Madison by James A. Webb Senior, a prominent local resident in memory of his only son, James A. Webb Junior. The chapel was designed by noted architect Josiah Cady and is an excellent example of the Romanesque revival style. For these reasons, Webb Memorial Chapel is listed on both the National and New Jersey Register of Historic Places as part of the Madison Downtown Civic and Commercial Historic District. And whereas the signage for the Presbyterian Church of Madison was torn in half and blowed down in the mini tornado that came through Madison in the previous year, the session worked with Madison sign maker Paul Weiskirber to build something substantial and sturdy that reflected the character and history of the church and chapel. And whereas the Madison Historic Preservation Commission congratulates and commends the Presbyterian Church of Madison for their thoughtful actions in constructing building signage that both functions well and sits harmoniously within its significant historic setting in the downtown civic and commercial historic district.
And I know that mini tornado all too well also, so I greatly appreciate the work you've done to restore after that, and certainly, to be pointed out in this proclamation, is the fact that the Heller Center, the previous location of the church, will be celebrating its two-hundredth anniversary this year, so we'll be recognizing that. Now therefore I, Robert H. Connolly, the Mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby recognize the Presbyterian Church of Madison for their commitment and historical accuracy of design in the borough. Congratulations.
It was providential that the sign would go. Actually, there were two signs that were completely obliterated. I always hated that sign, it just never fit with, anyway, so thank you, God. But it wasn't only Paul Weiskirber, it was four of us working together. It was Frank Lemizowski, Walter Moriarty, and Paul Weiskirber. And we sat there and said, we want something that reflects the church, we want something that's not going to be blown down again, because that sign had no footings on it. So now there's eighteen-inch footings, and it is made to look like the rest of the campus. And since I was one of the originals of the Historic Preservation Commission back in nineteen ninety-three, wrote the ordinance, wrote the sign ordinance, that we're going to follow everything to the letter. And I just wanted to add that the Historic Preservation Commission is not there to say no, they're there to say yes, and they have very good examples of things that you might want to consider doing. It's a strong ordinance that says you must apply to them, but it's a voluntary compliance, it's not heavy-handed. So we're just living proof that it works.
Thank you. And thank you again to Tyler for covering those big words and paragraphs for me, as I was losing my pace there, and thank you for those, for the dedicated work. There's the right way to do things, and there's the shortcut, and I thank you all for doing it the right way. And just as Mayor Holden described, we have the resources to guide you on that right path, so please reach out if you're thinking about it and watching this at home, we can All right, we will now move on to reports from committees. Finance and Borough Clerk, Council President Erlich.
Thank you, Mayor. The Tax Collector reminds us that the new annual tax bill will be sent out next month. Every year, the borough needs to wait for the state to pass their budget and to certify the budgets of the borough, the school district, and the county before we can get our new tax rate and begin creating the bills. Due to the normal tax billing schedule, which is billing halfway through the year, the third and fourth quarter amounts are always a little bit higher than the first and second quarters of the following year. There will be a bigger increase this year due to the school referendum. A letter was sent out to all taxpayers at the end of April explaining this increase, and copies are available in the tax office. Please note that if you have a mortgage lender paying your taxes, they might assume that future quarters will... that future quarters will all be equivalent to the larger third and fourth quarters. This may result in your lender miscalculating your monthly escrow amount and overcharging you. We therefore recommend that you monitor your escrow account through the beginning of next year for any changes. Please contact the Tax Collector's Office if you have any questions. I have a couple of reports on behalf of Councilman Landrigan as well. So the Police Department has an update for tonight. On June 9th, Captain Joe Longo will be attending the Middle Atlantic Law Enforcement Executive Development Seminar sponsored by the FBI to provide law enforcement executives with advanced-level leadership training and networking with other law enforcement executives in the Northeast. Captain Longo was the second Madison Police Department officer selected to attend, following Chief Misha, who was a 2018 graduate of the seminar. Starting June 16th, Madison Police will be on the lookout for school-aged kids in town who are riding their bike in a safe manner and wearing helmets. They will be issued a ticket for free ice cream as part of the Madison PD Bike Helmet Reward Program, which will last throughout the summer. And on June 13th, Madison Police Department will be hosting its annual DARE party at the Madison Community Pool for 5th grade graduates of the DARE program. Madison officers are in their 5th grade classes weekly, teaching the youth on dealing with peer pressure and preventing drug use. Madison Police Department has seven DARE instructors teaching our kids, and I'll note that my son Julian, a 5th grader, will be attending the pool party on Saturday, on Friday, he's looking forward to it. And most recently, on June 2nd, members of the Police Department, Community Policing, and Traffic Safety took part in the bike rodeo, which was held at Central Avenue School. Officers assisted DPW with bike inspections and concentrated on bike safety with the students. Officers then ended up taking a bike ride through the center of town with 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders, which must have been very exciting for those kids. The Fire Department reports that for the month of May, there was 199 emergency calls and 78 people were transported to the hospital by the EMS Division. The past week, the Fire Department responded to two motor vehicle accidents that resulted in a rollover. There were no major injuries. And there were several athletic events throughout town that the EMS stood by for, such as the Platypus Lacrosse Festival, and members of the Fire Department, along with the Police Department, stopped by the baseball field to greet the Little League players that were playing in the annual Fire Department versus Police Department matchup. Lastly, on June 6th, members of the Fire Department took part in a torch run that went through the town for Special Olympics. That is it for me tonight.
Thank you very much. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Range.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I start my reports tonight, I just want to echo your, your comments, Mayor, on the importance of the Pride Proclamation, especially this year. It's important that Madison continue to recognize the contributions of LGBTQ residents in Madison and in our broader community, and particularly in 2025, when Madison and New Jersey can remain a voice for all those underrepresented, underrepresented members of our community. As we see across our country, state legislatures are attempting to pass legislation to challenge and overturn marriage equality, and at the federal level, we see last week's announcements at the DOD taking action to rename commissioned naval ships, some that have been commissioned for several years, that include Harvey Milk, who is a gay rights activist, Navy veteran and civil servant, and in addition, they've indicated they will also rename ships from other national leaders, such as Ruth Bader Ginsburg, Harriet Tubman, and Thurgood Marshall, Lucy Stone and others. So in 2025, even though we've been doing our Pride Proclamation for a number of years, it's important that we continue to remain a voice for all those that may not have strong voices elsewhere in our community. And with that, Public Works and Engineering, the Parks Department has assisted the Platypus Tournament at the MRC and continues to prepare fields and ongoing maintenance for spring and summer sports activities. The Road Department has finished planting street trees for the spring, and they are now on a watering schedule as needed to make sure that they thrive throughout the summer. As a reminder, please do not flush hygiene products, floss or wipes, even those marked flushable, as they cause issues with our sewer pumps and processing equipment. DPW has cleaned down tree branches from heavy rains last weekend, over the course of the last couple of days, and the Sewer Department also cleaned out several culverts and drains in heavy flow areas prior to the storms that we recently had. From engineering tonight, at the Cook Avenue Parking Lot, as noted last time, the construction of the rain gardens has been completed and they continue to do good work through all this rainy weather we had in the month of, of May and early June. The MRC Solar Carport Project continues to make good progress, although the parking, the main parking lot remains closed. Access to the community garden is available via the sidewalk, and another alternate way to get into the community garden is actually parking on Burnett and walking in through the gate, through the back there, if you're trying to avoid peak time at the MRC. Applications for a grant from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for improvements on Shitty Lawn Drive have been approved, and that grant is for $500,000. In addition, we filed a grant application for additional trails in Summerhill Park through the Morris County Trails Grant Program, and road resurfacing, mill and overlay, line striping, crack sealing, and other work through the Morris County Co-op is being finalized, and that capital funding, of course, is already in place. And lastly, from the MEC tonight, the Madison Environmental Commission reminds residents that backyard mosquito spraying typically uses a broad-scale nerve toxin that the EPA calls acutely toxic to bees and other insects, which basically means when you're spraying for mosquitoes, you're impacting other beneficial wildlife, such as native pollinators, bees, fireflies, and moths as well. So we ask you to not spray those commercial available sprays, and instead you can look up the DIY alternative, friendly calling it the Bucket of Doom, and you can either Google Bucket of Doom, Mosquito Bucket of Doom, or go to homegrownnationalpark.org where they share the tips and tricks on how to build one of those and take care of mosquitoes in your backyard. That's all for now, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for reinforcing the Pride Proclamation. And utilities, Mr. Harlan Pudis.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Welcome everybody from the community. On the Water Department, it's important to know, as the temperature goes up, so does our water usage. Two weeks ago, our daily average was 1.7 million gallons a day. Last week, it rose to 2.3 million gallons a day, a 35% increase, and it hasn't even gotten hot yet. So there's voluntary water conservation that we would like to promote around the borough, and some of it started. Even numbered homes and businesses can water on even days, and vice versa for odd-numbered properties. There's a few simple things that you can do at home to conserve water, the obvious, only run the washing machine and dishwasher when you have a full load, don't water your lawn during the heat of the day, install a rain barrel for outdoor watering, install rain sensors on any irrigation systems that water your property, plant a rain garden, fix leaks in your hoses, fix leaks in your hoses, use a low-flow showerhead and faucet aerators. New Jersey Department of Transit has announced that they will be milling and paving Route 124 from Greenwood East to Brooklake. The Water Department recently cleaned and turned all the water valve boxes on Main Street. So we have made New Jersey Department of Transit aware of those locations so they don't pave over them as they have done in the past. In addition, New Jersey Department of Transit and their contractor have been advised that water to keep the dust down during the milling operation is available at a fill location at the DPW yard on John Avenue. Water cannot be drawn from our hydrants, keep an eye out for that happening, it will deplete our fire department's fighting capabilities, and the past has even caused water main breaks underground by improper use of our hydrants. Main Street in front of the Heller Center will be paved, which triggers a five-year moratorium prohibiting utility connections, which we might need to be doing now since we're renovating the Heller Center. So the borough architects are working with New Jersey Department of Traffic to get a waiver. On the Electric Utility, the Public Power Association of New Jersey just released their rate study comparing our Madison electric rates to the rates of investor-owned utilities like JCPL and PSENG, and I'm happy to report that our residents pay less than both JCPL and PSENG customers. PSENG electric customers are paying approximately 28.5% more than Madison residents. Many thanks to the Electric Utility staff under the direction of Superintendent Vince Patty and the excellent work of our CFO, Jim Burnett, managing the purchasing of our electric power. I'd also like to just comment, Mayor, that last week, I think it was on Thursday, I was at the Chamber of Commerce Awards Ceremony event, it was well-organized, and there was quite a few businesses that got recognized for different participation in the borough, promoting local business and, you know, shop at home. So it was a great event that they organized, I think they do it every year. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Ms. Honahan.
Thank you, Mayor. The next DDC meeting, Downtown Development Commission meeting, is July 17th at 7:15. The Madison Farm and Artisan Market is every Saturday from 9 to 1. Bottle Hill Day's 50th Year will be held on October 4th, so looking forward to the fall. And the Chamber of Commerce will have its fire extinguisher inspection program tomorrow on Central Avenue. It's $25 for a fire extinguisher inspection. The Madison Community Arts Center continues to have music open mics from 7 to 10 every second Wednesday. The Cafe Theater will be back with a compilation of short plays for Father's Day weekend, June 14th and 15th at 7:30. Other events are available and can be found online. And a big thank you to Dennis and Danny in the Engineers' Office who helped get us ready for National Trails Day, which took place this past Saturday. We had a really nice group of people who went for a hike in Summerhill Park and explored the paths there and talked about what might come based on public input. Thanks to Councilman Forte and County Commissioner Typhoon Zellin, who also joined us on the hike. Thank you.
Thank you. And Health, Mr. Forte.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Health Department, the Health Department completed 29 retail food inspections during the month of May, also investigated 17 complaints and two communicable diseases. The Board of Health passed an ordinance that will require the licensing of any establishment that sells electronic smoking devices. And Jean Nash, public health nurse, became a certified peer leader for the Healthy Bones Program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now move on to Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received an email dated May 31st from Kelly Stern of Knollwood Avenue regarding parking, and an email dated June 4th from Resident David Steckety of Ferndale Avenue, excuse me, regarding the Madison Community Pool.
Thank you very much. We now move on to our first of two invitations for public comment. The second one will be coming up very shortly because we have no ordinances for hearing. This one, you're limited to comment on our two items on our discussion agenda and our resolutions, and so these are the items you may comment on. Our agenda discussions will be an update on the MRC Solar Carport and a little background on the e-bike and scooter ordinance that is being worked on. And these are the resolutions you may comment on. Resolution 182 is ratifying salary increase, full-time confidential employees excluded from union participation. This covers 19 employees, and is a $1,200 salary increase, and again, is just to keep them on par with the union employees. Resolution 182 is ratifying salary, I'm sorry, I'm reading that again because we had to have a slight revision, deja vu all over again. Resolution 183, resolution confirming membership of Ryan Grismalla in the Madison Hook and Ladder Company Number One, volunteer. Resolution 184 is renewing liquor licenses in the borough for the 2025-2026 license year, and this includes club licenses, consumption license, and distribution licenses. Resolution 185 is authorizing Eagle Scout project to construct and install two planters and a bench, this is going to be done by Tommy Graham, so we appreciate his work, and he's a member of Boy Scout Troop 25. Resolution 186 is authorizing contracts under Educational Services Commission, and this is a cooperative pricing system. Resolution 187, supporting Madison Environmental Commission's House and Garden Tour, which will be held on July 12th to showcase sustainability and green practices with the home of Chris Kellogg and Helen Kerr at 3 Walnut Street. Resolution 188 is terminating, rejecting the submissions of all Madison Masonic Lodge, aka the Heller Center asbestos abatement project, they were deficient bids. Those are the items you may comment on, they will also be part of the consent agenda. Anyone wish to comment, any of those, please step forward, state your name and address, try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we give you one-minute grace. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we now move on to our agenda discussions. MRC Carport update, Jim, were you, oop. But you're well-prepared.
About that, Mayor, doing a little work. So MRC Solar Carport, if you get a chance to go out there, take a look at it, structure's going up very quickly, all of the piers are up, then there are the major structural supports that go, and then there's something called a pearlin, they're the, kind of the rafters, if you will, if you think of rafters on your roof, the solar panels get connected to that. This week, the Electric Utility will be making the connections from the transformer, which is behind, almost like home plate of the larger field, if you know the larger field, very near the Board of Ed property. The wire will come underground through pool boxes that were already established during construction, it will go to the side of the snack hut where there'll be a disconnect that we will kind of screen and shade, and then from there, the contractor will make the connections. We anticipate solar panels starting to go up tomorrow, and we're hopeful that it will actually reach substantial completion within about 25 days. We are going to accelerate submission of this to the federal government so we get direct pay. I think I reported to council that about nine months ago, we received a check from the federal government for a smaller direct pay payment for two electric vehicles that we had purchased, and it just, kind of, just check showed up in the mail. It actually paid interest because it was a long, a long delay from the time of our application until when we received the payment, and we're hopeful that we'll receive that amount. We have to calculate it, that could be a $400,000 to $500,000 amount, and then as Councilman Harlan Pudis knows, because he has solar panels on his, on his business, we will start to generate solar renewable energy credit or SREC dollars. We're hoping that those dollars equal about 1.5 million in total over a 15-year period, about $100,000 a year over a 15-year period. This whole project's going to cost us about $2 million, so the SREC will basically pay for three-quarters of it, and we'll get all that electricity, and if we get the direct pay, it'll be completely paid for through state and federal dollars, and then we will get all the electricity, in essence, you know, at a discounted to almost free rate. And as I said, we hope to have substantial completion at the end of this month.
All right, any questions or comments for Jim?
I have a question. First of all, Jim, thank you, this has been a long process, and you've shepherded it through very well with ups and downs. What would you say would be some lessons learned? You know, we've talked about now repeating this at other borough-owned sites where it makes sense to install solar, where there's some things we could take away from this that will help us on the next time out?
That's a great question. Geotechnical investigation beforehand, which we had done, but we- but we hadn't done a great job baking it into the bid specifications. We actually have already completed geotechnical work and have drawings ready, but not a bid package ready for the possibility of moving forward with putting solar at the community pool. We still need to figure out the exact specifics. There's some trees there, how that would work out. So we haven't gotten to that point, but that would be by far the most important thing. And before I forget, I have to thank Peter Fried because if he didn't keep bugging me, this wouldn't have happened.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other? Tom?
So the money that's coming for the grant is from the state?
There's the SREC dollars, like you get, right? And then there's federal dollars through direct pay. And to reiterate what that is, when you, I'm going to use you as an example, if that's okay. When you installed the solar panels on your warehouse, you got a tax credit.
Right.
Because we don't pay tax. We can't get a credit on our taxes. So there's something called direct pay where we actually submit a tax form like we would submit in between January and April for the calendar year and say, well, what'd you do? Well, we did this. And it was kind of funny, the ones for the electric vehicles, it was like a four-page form and only like four or five numbers on this entire form. We're like, I think it's right. We mailed it in and we got a check. So hopefully that will be the same. We do have some consultants that are going to help us since it's a four-hundred to five-hundred thousand dollar payment. We want to make sure we get it. But so that's from the federal government. So SREC's from the state, one-point-five billion, four-hundred to five-hundred thousand dollars from the federal government for the direct pay.
And the SREC's are fixed?
SREC's are fixed now. You've been through the process of when SREC's were marketable and had a fluctuating price. Now they're at a fixed rate.
Okay. And how about funding for the next phase project that you just mentioned that's still available? From what the consultants are telling you, they'll be?
I think the direct pay is going to be a concern, whether that's going to be available. But the SREC funds would still be available. So we can come to council with a couple of different proposals. There's a lot of other things, as you know, going on in the world of electricity and electric utility, as you reported with our rates. I think our needs for regular capital and then our needs for electric capital, we'll need to take that into account along with this sustainable project. Obviously, in my mind, the SREC money that comes in, I would suggest that council take that and put that aside back in the sustainability reserve that we had in the electric utility when we established that for this project and that that's a way of kind of annually funding additional dollars for that project.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for the update. All right. Talk a little bit about e-bikes. I'll take this one. And then we'll ask our attorney Marina to add anything directly related to the ordinance. But certainly, I have been receiving and other council members and boroughs as a whole emails and probably conversations on the street around e-bike safety. We had already begun working on an ordinance, which was initially discussed by the Complete Streets Committee, which has their full support. They'll be working on it a little bit more. And I've had discussions with neighboring mayors about coordinating the rollout of e-bike ordinances, which not necessarily making sure all the ordinances are identical because each town may have its own little issues to address. But I think a force of coming together, this would be, if it happens, would be with the Chatham's and Morris Township coming together and showing the importance of trying to keep those on the e-bikes and those near the e-bikes safe. So some considerations that would go into the ordinance. You know, it is clear e-bikes provide a great alternative to cars and other methods of transportation, but it's also clear they are more dangerous than just riding a bicycle. E-bikes are great for commuters who can ride to work without the concern of maybe sweating that might happen with a regular bicycle. Older adults can extend their bike-riding days and years with a pedal-assist bike. I'm looking forward to that when I become a little bit older. But it's clear that the danger goes up as you move from a bicycle to a pedal-assist level-one to a throttle-level-two bike. And this is clear, and it's also, I will qualify this next one to share some of my very own personal opinions, but e-bikes are not appropriate for children. Traditional bikes provide a great exercise while e-bikes increase the chance of serious accidents, especially if a child has not had the chance to learn bicycle etiquette, bicycle safety, before getting on an e-bike, which takes the control really out of their own legs, literally. And e-bikes on sidewalks and in downtown areas are dangerous, not only for the bikers, but for bystanders. So some of the key elements that will be covered in ordinance, you know, certainly clarifies local enforcement. There may be some, you know, rules that may be redundant with state regulations, but putting on the local level makes it very clear. It will cover not just e-bikes, but certainly scooters also. And again, recognizes that there are state regulations and e-bikes must follow bicycle regulations such as riding in the street, not sidewalks, helmets for anyone under eighteen, following traffic laws, signs and signals such as stop signs, traffic lights, keeping right, et cetera. And while sidewalk use as a whole is covered, it also directly bans the use in downtown area on sidewalks and in parking lots, requiring that the rider dismount the e-bike when leaving the roadway. And it puts fines in place through our ordinance that fines violators, but also in the case of a minor, we'd fine the parent of the minor. I think that was the highlights of, I got the gist of any of it?
Yeah, that was the gist. I think most of the proposed additions to the ordinance are common sense and are, like you stated, already part of state law, but just provides some reinforcement at the local level.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we include our parks in that somewhere. I know they've been-
Great, great idea. I think it's already in there.
Yeah, we put not just sidewalks, but also walkways, walking paths, any pedestrian areas.
Yeah, and I know that those trails don't have signage that preclude it. I mean, common sense would say you shouldn't ride it in there, but common sense doesn't always prevail. So I'm not sure if we're going to need to add a few signs here and there.
At the parks would be, Tom?
So it's a good idea, Mayor, to have something that gives some guidelines, especially for young. So I don't know what young, we consider young, is it a twelve-year-old, a fourteen-year-old? When we were growing up in New York, it was sixteen to be able to ride a moped. And you had to go get some kind of moped license. I don't even, I didn't have one, so I don't remember. But how, yeah, how are we going to message the community? Because there's going to be a lot of parents who will get that first summons from their kid and they'll say, I didn't know. You want to avoid having the little conflicts where they, you know, they're being taken advantage of and they have to pay whatever the fine might be.
I think the approach is typically we do with warnings at first. Certainly a communication program because, you know, this is not like almost every other rule we make that has fines. We're not in the business of collecting fines. We do it to keep people safe. So we'd much rather have someone get the message that use your e-bike, your scooter properly, and you'll live a healthier life. And we don't have to pull you over and fine you or your parents.
Sure. But we want to give them the opportunity to be proactive.
Yep.
So that however we get the message out, it's not just going to be social media, it might be through schools, I don't know. But then they'll know that here's the rules. You can go ask the police officers if you need to understand, or you'll find it on Rosenet, wherever you put it. Anyway, thanks.
And the ex of the Police Department, I think at the junior school at least, has done a safety campaign on e-bikes. And so I would anticipate that would be continuing. What's not on here, which has been done in some other communities, is banning e-bikes at certain age. We'll see where that, yep. Any other comments? So my goal is that hopefully, you know, we can introduce this in July. We are certainly in peak bicycling and e-biking season. So the sooner the better. All right. Well, thank you. And as mentioned, there are no ordinances for hearing. We did introduce ordinances twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three at our last meeting, but we didn't have the requisite time in between because we had a Wednesday meeting. So those will have a hearing on June twenty-fifth. We now invite the public to comment on any topic. And again, the same rules apply. Please step to the lectern, state your name and address. Try to keep your comments to four minutes, but we give you that one-minute grace period. And we'll ask you to stop at four.
Hi, my name is Colette Kreskis. I'm a member of the Board of the Friends of the Drew Forest. I also sit on the MEC, and I'm the appointed liaison between the MEC and the Shade Tree Management Board. I'm also a registered nurse and will share with you tonight the physical health benefits of forests and trees. We have multiple complex systems within our bodies. The sympathetic nervous system is responsible for what we know as the fight-or-flight response. This system kicks in when we have chronic stress or scared, anxious, et cetera. And the system releases the stress hormone cortisol. High cortisol levels can increase your risk of anxiety and depression, digestive problems, headaches, insomnia, type-two diabetes, and other illnesses. Cortisol also elevates your blood pressure and heart rate, which can lead to strokes, heart attacks, and other cardiovascular disorders. Excuse me. A two thousand and seventeen study found that due to its calming effect, just fifteen minutes in a forest, our Drew Forest, led to lower cortisol levels. Doctors are increasingly prescribing time and nature to their patients struggling with cardiovascular disease or anxiety. According to the Mayo Clinic, research suggests a minimum dose of two hours a week in a natural setting to maintain those desirable levels. The forest also helps to boost our immune system by directly releasing airborne chemicals called phytinsides. When we breathe these in, our bodies respond by increasing the number and activity of white blood cells. And these cells are critical in fighting tumors, virus-infected cells, and many bacterial infections. Trees and forests have a huge positive impact on our respiratory systems as well, system. The trees filter air pollutants such as carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, and sulfur dioxide. They also filter particulate matter and other gases, leading to cleaner air and reduced risk of respiratory diseases such as lung cancer, bronchitis, emphysema, and asthma. While we are breathing that clean air, we are also breathing in the oxygen that trees provide through the process of photosynthesis. This is why forests are often referred to as green lungs. Forests play a crucial role in filtering liquid pollutants and chemicals. The greater the tree cover, the higher the filtration rate, and this is a huge plus. The water runoff from storms often contains sediment from roofs, parking lots, garbage, and animal waste, et cetera. The forest captures this water, filters out the pollutant particles, and stores it below the forest surface. Removing these and other pollutants prevent waterborne illnesses such as dysentery, giardia, e. coli, and salmonella, to name a few. Illnesses related to climate change, such as heat fainting, heat exhaustion, and heat stroke, can be fatal. Forests and trees provide a crucial buffer, cooling the local environment and preventing the heat island effect in communities. Lastly, the presence of forests and green spaces encourage outdoor activities like walking, hiking, and recreation that all contribute to our overall, excuse me, our overall physical fitness and reduces the risk of chronic disease. I need a forest right now. So please go out and enjoy the Drew Forest, stay well, and thank you, Mayor and council members, for your continued efforts in saving it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Colette, and certainly appreciation to the Friends of the Drew Forest who go to the, almost to the second, had to deliver a four-minute or less message. And, you know, maybe we will do at least one council meeting a year in the forest to recharge ourselves. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward.
Peter Rosa, thirty-seven Pine Avenue, Madison, New Jersey. I'm here for the parking again. Just give me a minute. A little slow here. I was here last week. I was here the week before. I'll be here all the time. It's still not right. Like I said, you got Bottle Hill Tavern takes up two spots, doesn't pay. When they purchased that restaurant, it had X amount of seats. When I purchased my home and wanted to do an addition, I was only allowed to make it so big. You're greasing them giving it more. Are they giving anything back to the town? Same thing with Firehouse, using the three parking spots and the sidewalk and also fifty-four main. You told me it was a safety issue. It's between two and six. That's four hours. Okay? What goes on between two and six? You said it was a safety. I want to find out what it is.
This is, finish your comments and-
Well, I figured answer and question time.
No, it's not a question period. This is a comment.
All right. Are you getting anything back from these establishments that are taking full-time parking spots?
Not a question period. I'll respond after the comment period.
All right, then I'll sit down and you can answer those questions.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close the comment period. Just a couple, certainly the downtown, use of downtown parking spots for dining and the overnight parking are two different issues. There is a fee charged to any business that uses spots for downtown dining. Obviously, this was something instituted during the height of the pandemic. It, you know, what we're seeing in Madison and towns across the state is the value of what outdoor dining does to feed downtown businesses, literally. And so we put this in as a standard process. And again, they do pay an annual fee for that ability to take up the parking spots. As we are looking at the reconstruction of a waverly place, certainly we will look at how downtown, in-the-street dining goes in the future. As was stated at the last meeting, the ban on overnight parking has been in effect through my lifetime here in Madison, at least as far as I can remember. Certainly in my adult days, which is also a very long time. And it was never intended to have residents call in to use an exemption to manage their parking on a day-to-day basis. It was always intended to be used as a, as was stated when we introduced the ordinance, the, you know, ceiling of the parking, you know, out-of-town guests that you really didn't have room for. That the intention is to have residents manage the parking either on their property with properly-done-side driveways or working with a neighbor or getting permit passes. There's been issues throughout the town, in particular neighborhoods, with a lot of neighbors complaining, saying, why aren't you enforcing this rule? So we put the rules behind it to enforce it so we can be consistent. And step one also, to answer your question about safety, was reviewing, does this make sense to have this ban between two and six AM? And this is similar to many towns around us. And the overwhelming consensus of the committee and the Police Department was yes. It makes it easier for patrolling, emergency, and so on, especially in the wee hours. And so we appreciate your feedback. And just like any other ordinance, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's a year old or fifty years old, we do review it. And if it comes to a point, there should be a change, I would see maybe a future council looking at it or even possibly this council if it so does. But again, this is not a change from what was in place three months ago. This is consistent with what was placed over a half a century ago. I'm sorry, sorry. Yep, we'll see you next time, Peter. Appreciate it. All right, we now move on to introductory ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Wednesday, June the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call it ordinances for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title. Ordinance 24-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 195 of the Borough Code to correct an error in Section 195-5C regarding the partial repeal of Ordinance Number 2-2023.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 24-2025.
Second.
And this relates to the, when we took action to ban cannabis, medicinal cannabis. So, it's just a clarifying. Any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harlan Pootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Ordinance 25-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $410,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to fund a portion of the downtown signage program.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 25-25.
Second.
And council discussion. This is part of our capital budget, somewhat, somewhat it's being supported by ARPA money. Tom, I know, did you want to share your, some of your comments? Is that to, not to put you on the spot, but I know you were?
Yeah, I'm so happy about this. It's been, it's been like three years, I think, maybe four years since this helping was done. We kicked the can down low for a little while. Might be a little more expensive, but at least this is going to really help make a difference to downtown, directing people and what they're looking at. Thanks for making it happen.
It seems like a long time from when we, you know, hired the firm and put it in place. But we know that when you visit another town that you're not familiar with and you see the signage that gets you to the parking, it is very helpful. So, it would be nice to have consistent and very clear signage for, it's more than just the parking, but that certainly is high on the list. Any other comments?
We could just point out, since the signage program was pretty far-reaching in terms of scope, that this specifically is funding signage for gateway signage, which is the roadways leading into town or at our town borders and parking. And that doesn't mean we won't get to the other signage elements in the package, but we're starting with.
Like any master plan, it gives us a path to go. And besides finding parking, if there's another complaint I get on a regular basis is, how come Madison doesn't have good welcome to Madison signage? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harlan Pootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolution. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolutions R. 182-2025 through R. 188.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Harlan Pootis will abstain from 184.
Yes, sir.
Any other? Melissa?
Just a question about the Eagle Scout project. As I understand it, this bench and planters will be at the Heller Center, is that correct?
I don't, I think it's?
Do we know where it is? Oh, to be determined. Okay, so, it's a project, a project and the site will be determined. Okay, great.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment on 183. Just another shout-out to our fire chief for continuing the great work in recruiting volunteers to the volunteer side of the fire department. So, it's great to see those numbers continuing to grow.
Rachel?
I want to second that. I think it's just the enrollment, volunteerism has taken off under Chief Wickman and it's extraordinary. So, I'm glad you mentioned that, Eric. I agree and I want to lend my voice to support that sentiment.
Any other comments or? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erlich? Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harlan Pootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
So, we got, for the record?
Okay. Sorry, Mayor. Okay. I abstain from resolution, what is it, 185?
184.
184, 2025.
Take the license renewed.
Yes, sir.
All right, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
From the current fund, $353,772.81. From the electric operating fund, $84,401.46. From the electric capital fund, $499,458.99. From the water operating fund, $860.81. From the water capital fund, $13,395 even. And from the trust, $11,955.50. The total is $963,844.57.
Mayor, I move approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harlan Pootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forte?
Yes.
Business, just a reminder that our, again, our next meeting will be Wednesday, June 25th, the usual time. And with that?
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.